Well, good evening. I called to order the city council regular meeting. I asked the clerk to do row call, please.
Row call. Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor pro Tim Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Canes.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I invite everyone in the audience to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, I have the motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, removing item Action Request 7B, the laundromat tax amendment.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Row call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Now, we'll take public comments for items that's on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. We ask you to come to the microphone and state your name. That's on the agenda. Anyone? Hearing none. We have one that was sent in. It's from, oh my goodness, I didn't put it in glasses. It's from Jason Hammond. "I am a cybersecurity professional and have helped build several websites. The current city website is challenging for even a tech-savvy person like me to navigate. Communication updates from the current website are often confusing and there's no mobile app version of the website. As such, I do not believe Revise should continue as the host of the city's website. I have been impressed by Aptige's presentation and the ease of use of the example website and mobile app for the city of Holster, Minneapolis. I believe a website managed by Aptige be much easier for residents, business owners, and staff in Lathert Village to use. Please consider using Aptige for the city's website manager going forward." Any further? Need approval for the motion, excuse me, motion for the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine and non-controversial and can be approved by the city council by one motion.
I make the motion to approve at pulling B and D.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further, no further discussion? Row call.
Row call. Mayor pro Tim Cantor.
Oh, wait a minute. Excuse me. There is no discussion when it comes to...
No, not at this time.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Mayor pro Tim Cantor.
No.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carry.
I'm going to item B.
Item B is the police department reports. As Kelly just read, the consent agenda is considered routine and non-controversial. And that's why a lot of times I pull things from this packet. We're going to be asked to approve $926,243 tonight, and I think that there should be questions and discussions about these things. The police reports, and going through the police report, there were several incidents of, it was determined that the resident mailed checks totaling $1,800 at the Lathert Village post office. The unknown suspect changed the recipient name on the checks to another person to cash the checks. The detective bureau was investigating. There were several incidents like this at the Lathert Village post office, and I just think that it's something that residents should be aware of. I mean, it's our, you know, neighborhood post office. So anyway, I wanted to pull that to make sure people were aware. I asked Pam if someone could present a report. She said the Office of Inspector General Postal Police are handling the matter, and any reports that the police department took have turned over to them. We have not received any updates or any developments on the investigation. I don't know what you want them to report on because they, there is really nothing to report at this time. If you want to bring this up to council, I can inform the residents what I've informed you about. So I just informed you about it, and so be careful of what you mail, and hopefully we will get an update on that situation if anyone is apprehended or anything.
This first one, report D.
D, dispersment report. I had emailed Pam with several questions. One of them was on page 44. There was a $700 payment to Cliff from Recreation Community Events. So... It was put to the wrong account. So Pam said she was going to be doing a journal entry on it.
The journal entry has been done. There was $100 that was supposed to be taken out of there for the candidate forum that he had to set up and clean up afterwards and take down. That $100 did go to the Community Events Recreation out of the 101-601 account. And the 700 was for events that he has done for this, you know, when he does community room events, that he sits here with the people for their whole party. He sets them up, takes them down, cleans.
So it was a total of $800?
Yes.
Okay. And the $100, why would that go...
Oh, no. It was a total of 700.
Oh, okay. So 600 in the community.
So I moved 600 to the other account, correct.
Why would that $100 for the community or candidate forum come from the recreation budget?
Where would it come from?
Government operations or community events.
Well, it really wasn't government operations. I mean, it could have came from community room, but that is a, it's a community event. It's a community event for a forum. I mean, it wasn't a forum from the city. That actually was from the women's league voters.
Okay, but our recreation...
That's why it was taken out of the recreation budget.
Our recreation budget is so small to begin with, I was kind of concerned that it was coming out of there. Okay. I asked about page 44 and 45. There are chloride applications from the road commission of Oakland County. Who applies that? Was that for supplies or was that for actually applying it?
Oakland County applies it twice a year, and it's for dust control on the dirt roads. And they apply it twice a year.
So is that the only upkeep we have of our dirt roads?
No, we, our gentlemen plow them, or will grade them down and that, but Oakland County puts on, they have the machinery and everything to put the chloride on the dirt roads to keep the dust...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I asked page 69, Recreation. Looks like we're over budget on concerts in the park, but Pam said that the annual fee was paid twice, and she has asked for the money to be returned. Oh, I had asked about page 69, Professional and Contractual Sacra Refuse Charges Were Recorded Against That Account, and Pam said that was put in error, and so she was going to be moving it, and there was a journal entry to be done to correct it.
Correct. And it was done in the accounts payables. The last numbers on the accounts are 000 and 001. It went into 000, and it should have went into 001.
Okay, thanks.
That's the error in that part.
Okay. And then page 75, Salaries Part Time. I wasn't understanding this. There was $0 allocated in the amended budget, but $4,525 was spent.
That was out of the DDA budget, and that's where I had put, and it's further down in the Main Street, too, when you asked about the Main Street program. For some reason, the budget amendments from 630 in the DDA transferred over to this fiscal year, which they should not have done. And I thanked Councilwoman Miller for catching that because I had to call the BSNAR program or accounting program and find out why they did that or why it did that. And we have fixed that now. So their budget is exactly their original budget, and their amended budget are exactly the same. They have not had any budget amendments done at all this year so far. Usually, our budget amendments are done in January and June.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
And then I asked questions, oh no, actually, that's not in this. Never mind. I'll save this for my comments. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept that?
Did you want to talk about the, because I know at the last meeting, and I was not here, you brought up about the water billing?
Yeah, but does that fall under those?
It's a question you asked.
That's what I said. I know. I said I would do it in the comments.
Okay. Yep.
I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Following the correct order.
And then there was one more question. Mr. Cantor asked a question about the dispersment report, and there were two, 15,000 some charges for Sacra, and that was their August and September billing. So it was two months' worth of billings. And I had let him know that. So those were the only dispersment questions I had received. Is there any other ones?
No, thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor, just remember, two separate, each one needs to be done in a separate motion.
Someone like to make the motion for the police department monthly reports?
I'll make a motion to approve the police department monthly reports.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Row call, please.
Mayor pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we need approval of the dispersment reports. I mean, not approval of the motions, excuse me.
Make a motion to approve the dispersment reports.
Support.
It's been moved in support. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Row call, please.
Mayor pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have action requests for consideration and approval, temporary interim city administrator.
Yes, Mayor and Council. I have asked for a temporary interim city administrator to be appointed, as I will be out on medical leave starting October 23rd for approximately four to six weeks. And I have asked that Scott McKee be appointed to that position as our personnel policy does state him as the third in line. It's the city administrator interim, or the assistant city administrator, and then the police chief would be the following from the personnel policy. So I have asked if Scott McKee could temporarily be, temporarily be appointed as interim city administrator until my return.
Motion to appoint Scott McKee as temporary interim city administrator until Pamela Bratshee, the interim city administrator, returns.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, so is there, is there an effect on salary?
He will like to be compensated for his time.
So would it be the, would be the same increase that...
That's up to you guys, what you want to give him for the month.
Yeah, because that needs to be in the motion, I think.
So do you try?
You want me to prepare the motion? No. I think you guys need to make a determination is how much additional compensation, if you want to get awarded to him, and then I would also suggest maybe how the duties are going to be split up, or...
There's no splits, just for him.
Just for him, okay.
Yeah, so I mean, what did we do last time?
Well, all three of us, it was 2,000.
2,000, right.
Yep. And with me right now is 2,500.
It's a 5,000 a month, right?
For me.
Yep.
Right now, yes.
So will that continue?
That's up to council. I mean, I will be doing a couple of things because I do have to do the MDNA report while I'm off, because it has to go to the, for the audit report that has to be done by the city administrator, and I know Scott cannot do that report. So I have already told my auditors I would do that report for them.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, so I mean, what about the, what we did last time, 2,000? What's that?
Are you saying...
I'm just throwing out a number to get the conversation started.
What about splitting the compensation for the month?
That's what I was thinking, like, 2,000, well, are we saying, like, bring Pam's down to 2,000, then pay him 2,000 as well, or 20,000?
Well, I guess the one question, this would be a city attorney question, is there an issue with bringing down a salary because somebody's going on medical leave?
I think there's, well, especially since she's told, just told you that she's going to continue to do the job.
Right.
I mean, potentially, don't plug your ears, Pam. I think you might, there might potentially be an interpret, you don't actually have to plug your ears.
Right.
There might be, you know, a spin or an interpretation that it was done as retaliatory for taking medical leave.
Right.
Not saying that Pam would suggest that.
Right.
I don't, and if she's continuing to do the job, I don't think it's appropriate. That's just... I'm okay with the 2,000.
Yeah, I mean, it's the short term. It's temporary. It gives them a little bit of increase for the extra duties and the overtime.
So does the motion have to be restated?
It should be amended, yeah.
I'm going to, excuse me.
I'm just trying to add in what I need to... Okay, can I amend the motion?
You have to amend it, say it.
I just said it.
No, you have to amend the motion to appoint...
Oh, amend the motion to appoint Scott McKee as temporary interim city administrator until... No, no. Until Pamela Bratshee interim city administrator returns.
With the additional...
With the additional $2,000 in payment.
Second.
It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Row call, please.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have the website redesign.
Yes, I'm sorry. The council has, Mayor Council, you have looked at three different website designs over the past few months, probably the past six months maybe or more. And so we are bringing the three, three website design teams to you. One of them is Revise, who we have right now. The other one is Civic Plus, who we have some other applications with Civic Plus, C Quick Fix being one of them. And then the other one is Aptige, which is a new company that I don't know much of, or since what I saw. But, I mean, those are the three that are, for your choosing of to have a new website designed on. And we are supposed to be getting assistance, receiving technical assistance for that, to update our website.
You mean in terms of a grant? In terms of a grant?
It's technical, it's called technical assistance grant.
Technical assistance, right.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the Aptige company to work with the city staff and redesign the city of, city website for Lathert Village.org with an amount not to exceed, did we get the discount, Kelda?
Yes.
With an amount not to exceed $12,900.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Hammond said that he was supportive of the company to manage the site. The companies don't manage our website, do they?
No, the, websites are managed within-house, but the, this company, Aptige, has said, from what I got of the last study session that we had with them, is that they will redesign our website or update our website once a year for us.
Okay, because really, the problem is with the in-house management, it not being updated, old stuff not being taken off. So that's where the issue is. I don't know what's going to be different if we go with another company.
And there'll just have to be more people trained on it, because right now, there's very few people that are trained on the back end of the website, the revised, as of now.
Right.
And the ones that have been trained on it, most of them have resigned from the city. So I think there's only two that I know of that are able to get to the back end of the design.
So again, I don't think we're getting at the, at the root problem here. And also, I had asked for a side-by-side comparison of the three websites, and you said that wasn't available. What do you do, what does the process look like when you're looking at bids?
That, it's up to council what you want on this one. I mean...
Yeah, we got the information.
I've given you the information. You have heard all the steals from all the companies. They all have their, you know, what they're offering in their packets.
Right, but they're not totally apples to apples.
Right, well, we need to look at it. I mean...
I mean, I can't, I, to put apples to apples, it would have been very hard. And right now, I did not have the time to do that. When you asked on Friday for it, I did not have the time to do it over the weekend. And that's why I told you I was not going to be able to get it done.
I understand, and I understand that. I'm just wondering, what is the regular process? We've been talking about this for a while. We've had the three presentations. Say it's something else. If you get three bids, three quotes on something, what does it look like? How do you compare?
Normally, you're, if you're doing road projects, anything like that, your engineer will put those down because they get, they get an amount from everybody, and it's, this is what it is. This is the amount, this is the amount, this is the amount.
Structure.
Structure. There's no add-ons, there's no...
You'll put out an RFP, which will identify your project and the scope and what you're asking the applicants to bid on, and then based on that, you'll get, you know, the job is, is, you know, here it's a little bit different. We didn't put out an RFP soliciting bids.
Why didn't we? Aren't we supposed to do that if it's over a certain amount, over $5,000 or something?
This started prior to me becoming the interim city administrator.
Okay. And then I had also recommended that we form a resident committee with people who are in this business, so that they can look at the website and the CRM system and a texting system and kind of, you know, advise. I don't, I don't know, maybe there are people up here who know how to analyze all this information and compare and see, you know, what is it that we're looking for as a city. But I just, you know, thought that residents who are in the business would be a good idea to do that. They're the ones that use the site. So I made that request, I believe, in July, but it was ignored. So I'm just...
I think we can still allow, like, a resident on the, once we actually approve which website we want to use, we can still allow certain people to be on the committee when they're working on building the website.
Right, and we talked about that at the last meeting. Yeah.
But it's kind of late. We're, we would be stuck with something. That are backwards to me, but, okay.
Well, that's how they presented the process to us. That's how...
When they were trying to sell it to us, you mean? The salesperson, is that what you're saying, who presented the process? Okay.
Yes. Yes, I've got some comments. So, you know, we've had multiple presentations from the various vendors. You know, Revise is our current website, and I've never been impressed with them, and I know it's hard to, hard to update and maintain. So we had Civic Plus in here, and Civic Plus, you know, comparing them to Aptige, their website was a little bit nicer, although it was pretty confusing during their presentation between their ultimate and premium design, which was kind of confusing, although it looks like that we would end up doing the ultimate design to meet our needs. But it, and it is nice that it's, on the pro side, it's nice that it is integrated with Mutico and C Quick Fix. And their ongoing cost is a little bit cheaper, but the big issue for me with, again, Civic Plus is, one, there's no annual redesign, and there's no push notification system that's, that's worth anything. So their push notifications were pretty weak. It was similar to what we have now, which, you know, I think is pretty weak. And their pricing was also very confusing with the, you know, the à la carte, you know, application. So it's real difficult, you know, going in to know outside of the basic website what the final cost is going to be. And then with respect to Aptige, you know, their website was pretty nice. What I saw, the difference between the websites is their websites were, had more scrolling, more scrolling design to it than the static website for Civic Plus. But we did ask the question of whether or not they could do a non-scrolling design, and they said, yes, they had done non-scrolling design. So that would, that is good. But I think the real key to Aptige is their resident app. And if we go with a vendor that doesn't have a resident app, I think we're missing a huge opportunity to dramatically improve our communication to our residents. They have an app, which we've all seen, and I think some of us have loaded on our phones, that allows push notification alerts. So, you know, there's a dog loose, there's a broken water main, there's a council meeting, and it comes to the app. So people see it. They don't have to go and click on it. Like, right now, we have to click on a link and then wait to go to the website. Everything is right there. And I think that's, I think we need that.
Messages.
And so it's different than text messages. You know, again, it's an app like we have on your phone, like you scroll through Facebook. It's the same thing. You scroll down, you can choose what you want to see, what you don't want to see. The other thing that is nice, that I thought was a big plus for Aptige, was that their updates are done on a, can be done on a desktop, but they can also be done on a phone. So, you know, Suzie or Pam is, you know, out in the city somewhere, and they see an issue like a water main break. They can boom, get on the webs, or get on their phone, and in two seconds, they update the, you know, the app and the website. And what it does, again, which was also, I thought was impressive, is it syncs across platforms, which saves the city a lot of time. So if Pam makes a water main break update to the website, it goes out to Facebook at the same time. So we don't have to go out to Facebook and separately do that. So that gives us the ability to, you know, engage more people. And then the other thing that they do is they can, they create mini sites. So they, you know, if we want to have separate branding for the DDA or for the police, they'll build their own site within a site. And then a couple other things that were big positives for me for Aptige, one was that their search was within the website. So what we have now, you do a search, and it brings back all sorts of stuff. So if you're looking for something in the website, it gets really confusing. And then the reference checks, when we had the first meeting with Aptige, was it back in April or May, the reference checks were stellar. And then both companies had a 99% retention rate. So, you know, either way, there, it's, you know, they look like good sized businesses that know what they're doing. So, but my personal preference is Aptige because I think it solves two needs, not just the website, but also getting information out to residents faster in a more cogent and synchronized way.
Thank you.
Long-winded, but, you know.
Not so messy.
When have, when have I ever been too brief?
Never.
Is there any other discussion?
Pam, who do you see being involved in the training session?
Well, the city clerk would be involved, probably our, for the water department, probably our water department, Martha, and probably the treasurer, the new treasurer will probably be involved in that. And probably the manager will have to be involved in it so that they can update things. So there'll be a, you know, and then the police department will update their portion of the website. So the police department will have theirs, and the DDA will have their person to update their side, so...
Yeah, I think in their demo, they said that a lot of cities have their mayor gets trained, and the mayor does like a blog or something.
Yeah.
It was something that our mayor wanted to do recently, but... He's always wanted to be a blogger.
I have enough on my plate. Thank you.
You sure?
I'm positive. So that would be probably who would be trained. There could be a vast majority of people that could be to be trained on it.
Any other questions? In the sensitive... So we are having a motion for Aptige.
Motion.
Okay, just want to make sure.
We're voting, we're voting.
So, row call, please.
Row call. Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have the planning commission appointments.
Yes, Mayor, there are two spots open for the planning commission. One of the spots is Will Fabs, who is currently on council now. The other one would be Alicia Powell has resigned from the planning commission, and that just happened recently. So it was not put in your packet at that. But her application, there's three applications in here, and her application is here, in here. And so the mayor has chosen to reappoint Mr. Fabs to a term of August ending, for his term ending August 31st, 2026, and to also appoint Christina...
Krista.
Krista McClary, McClary. And her term would be August 31st, 2025.
Recommend appointing.
Recommend, yes, I'm sorry, recommends appointing, so one's a reappoint and one's a recommend.
Now, I'll make a motion to appoint Will Fabs to the planning, reappoint Will Fabs to the Planning Commission for the term ending August 31st, 2026.
Second.
Just moving to second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, having served with Will on the Planning Commission, he's one of our best planning commissioners, and he is incredibly well-versed in development, you know, urban development, all, all the aspects that are zoning and so forth, and he's, he's a great asset to the city.
Thank you, is any further, further discussion? Here, none, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Someone needs to make an appoint, um, appointment, a motion for the appointment of?
Krista.
Krista McClare, McClure, McClure, sorry. Who would like to make the motion?
I can make a motion to appoint Krista Robin McClure to take, what's Alicia's, I forgot her.
Powell.
Powell, yeah, Alicia Powell's current term ending.
Third, August 31st of 2025.
What she said.
Second.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion? Here, none, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have, thank you, we have, I'm sorry, Ms. McClure, you are actually here, would you like to say anything?
Uh, sure, my name is Krista McClure, resident of Lathir Village, a little over a year, thank you. I did not anticipate that I was going to be on the meeting, so this is an exciting moment, but I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with the Planning Committee and you all as well to help improve the business development of Lathir Village.
Thank you, welcome. Next, we have the City Administrator's report.
Okay, I had three, but now I only have two things. The first one that was the post office, so we can do away with that one. The other one, let me see here. I was asked about the newsletter that goes to the homes, the paper copy of the newsletter that goes to homes, and that will not be, we will not have a newsletter going out until the new city administrator is appointed. At this time, we do not have the staffing for this newsletter and for somebody to do it at this time, so I did let the member or the council member know that the letter would not be going out until after the city, the new city administrator is appointed. So that will be sometime next, hopefully, January or so, but I can't say when that's going to happen. And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up is that, at one of our study sessions, I was accused of being a liar, and so was Suzie Stack, we were both being accused of being liars, that we told a resident that the system would not be fixed, that they had to get it fixed themselves. And I, the next day, I went to our engineers, and I talked to our engineers, and our engineers did tell me that the work was done at the person's house. They also told me that they took the person off the list because the work was done at their house, and they also sent me a copy of a text message thanking, it says, "I'm sorry for my delay," response, "Yes, Jason replaced four sprinkler heads today, he didn't arrive early, but got the job done. I sincerely appreciate your follow-through and getting my job finished, thank you so much." That was done two days prior to the day I was called a liar, so I just want to let people know that I don't lie, and I'm not going to. I will tell the truth, if I've done something wrong, I will tell the person that I've done something wrong. I am very, I would not have been here for 23 years if I was lying to the residents and not, and things like that. So I just wanted to make that clear so that the residents do know that I sincerely love Lathir Village, I have been here for 23 years, yes, I'm retiring December 31st, but there's reasons why I'm retiring, but I have loved it here, and I have loved most of the residents here. Everybody I talk to is wonderful, you know, I've had, people come in, they want to talk to me, I bring them back to my office, we sit down, we talk, we go through whatever they want. I will not lie to somebody, so I just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you. City attorney?
Nothing for me tonight.
Uh, any reports, boards, commissions, committees?
Yes, Sackwa and Sakura, we just finished up the interviews for the general manager on Thursday, and so there will be a process where the four candidates meet with staff and then move on with choosing the new manager. It was a very professional process, and everybody was involved in it, and it, it was really great, so, anyway. Keep you posted.
And then just from the Planning Commission, just the, the meeting tomorrow has been canceled because we, we can fail to reach a quorum, so that'll be postponed until the next Planning Commission meeting, which is November, third week in November, third Tuesday in November.
One more.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other commissions, committees?
I just wanted to share that I was elected the president of the Optimists Club for Southwood and Lathir Village.
Oh, cool.
So, just wanted to share that information, if anybody, you know, wants to learn about the Optimists Club or anything that we do, just please feel free to reach out, so, just wanted to share that.
Congratulations. Unfinished business, new business?
Nope, I don't have any.
Okay. Public comment, speakers are limited to three minutes, uh, just want to state your name, if you want to say the address, you can, but it's totally up to you. Anyone?
Good evening, council, Adam Laurie, I come to you tonight as the creative director for the Lathir Village Music Festival. We put on a pretty fun festival here out in the park, September 30th, it was amazing, we were blessed with some incredible weather, and I just wanted to come in and thank council, the DDA, the community in Lathir Village, the business community of Lathir Village for helping us and supporting us with this event. For those of you that came, it was really a special day, this was something that started in August with the idea of just having some kind of a, a party, basically, that as we started to talk about it and take shape, turned into a festival. We had an incredible team of organizers, working with the, through the DDA with Suzie Stack and Brittany Dorsey, we were incredibly productive together. It was probably the best team I've ever worked on. Everything just moved smoothly, we had a very short window of time, we had two, two months from the idea to the execution, and it was amazing what we were able to all put together. Everything, as the ideas flew, came, came together, we just knew that we had to be decisive, but we had a vision for what we wanted this to be about, right? It was about doing something positive for the city of Lathir Village, right? Shining a positive light on the city. There's not a whole lot of things that people point to Lathir about something that's current and hip and exciting, right? And the whole motivation, it was not about making money, it was about putting on a very high-quality event, high-quality music, right? And just keeping the scope narrow for this year. So, those of you that may have been there, the feedback we got was phenomenal. People were amazed the way that we transformed the park, people were leaving just begging, not begging, I should say, but it just, you know, are you coming back again next year, what's it going to look like? So, we have a lot of positive sentiment in the community. We hope to be able to do this again next year, we feel it was very, very successful, the business community particularly, as this was done through the DDA, they're the real beneficiaries of something like this. They were in the park promoting their businesses, the food trucks that came, sold out of their food, right? It was a very successful event. The buzz all through Metro Detroit was, people were talking about it everywhere, it was promoted on WDET on the radio. It really shined a bright light on Lathir and created some excitement. For next year, we will now have more planning time, so we invite anyone in or outside of the community, but specifically in the community, that wants to be a part of it, reach out to us. The, the email address is lvmfest@gmail.com, please feel free to email, email us, we'll probably actually get into planning probably six months out, but we invite everyone's participation, and thank you all again very much for supporting us and putting on the music festival.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, anyone? Anyone else to?
Yes, I did, like my chance to speak, since I was just attacked by Pam, Lori Koons, the resident that was accused of this, and Pam, I want this to be clear, because I tried to talk to you after the meeting, and you got the police. I recorded the whole study session where I talked to you, and I did go into the front office, and your response on film when I said, "I can prove it," because you said it to me in the office in front of everyone, and you said, "Good luck getting that tape," or "Good luck foying that," because I couldn't believe that I asked for my, um, my sprinklers to be repaired, and you took me off the list, four times I had asked. So I addressed the, the engineer on the side personally, who said, "Your name isn't on the list, I promise, I'll get it done for you." And when he got it done on a Saturday, I responded, "Thank you for being so prompt and taking care of it, I have waited way too long to get them done, it was over." I settled for way less of a repair than I should have gotten, because they took out 100 feet of my irrigation and lost several of my heads, and you sat there and lied to me, how dare you? And the mayor laughed at it, I have it on tape like this, it is not my fault, I wanted my sprinklers repaired, and you said that residents aren't allowed to get it done through their irrigation company and get reimbursed. Andrew Nelson told me, you did it for other residents, and you could have done it for me.
And I told you that.
Okay, okay, yeah, we're not going to do an argue.
I'm not going to argue. Nope.
Okay. Is there any other?
Good evening, my name is Chuck Snelling, and I've been a resident for 25 years, and I've never spoken at city council before, but I did want to kind of piggyback on Adam's comments because I worked the Lathir, Lathir Music, Lathir Village Music Festival a couple of weeks ago, and I had the plum assignment of being the parking attendant, which is not as glamorous as it sounds, but it was a great opportunity to really interact with residents and neighbors, people coming and going. And I have to say that it was an incredible event for Lathir Village, I know Bruce was there, Kelly was there, Jalen was there, it was really great to have the support of some members of council. And people were coming from Oak Park, Berkeley, Southfield, they were so complimentary about what a great thing Lathir Village was doing, and residents were just having a great time. It was a beautiful summer evening, they were hanging out, listening to the music, having a beer, having a hot dog, just relating to each other, and to me, that's what Lathir Village is. What we just saw is not Lathir Village, that festival is Lathir Village, people coming together from all different backgrounds, ages, and groups, just chilling and having a great time and celebrating the things that we share in the city. Anyone who's lived here for any length of time, I think should celebrate that, the pettiness, the discord, I'm just exhausted from it. So I just wanted to add that, and I also wanted to say personally, Pam, thank you for your service, because you've always been so professional and so friendly at City Hall, and I will miss you, coming in there, pay my water bill every month, pay my sewers, pay my sidewalks, and you guys have done enough for me, so please, no more improvements for a while. But at least it's a pleasure to come in and see smiling, recognizable faces behind the window there at the front desk, so I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm, I'm sorry that not everyone appreciates you as you should be appreciated, so, thanks.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Hi, Lauren Barris, I really, I had something prepared, but they both talked so much about the festival so beautifully, I don't, I don't really need to say all of it, but I want to piggyback on what Chuck said, and Lathir Village really depends on residents, I mean, on residents volunteering, and it's so important, and I learned that most with this event. There were about 20 volunteers, we could not have done it without those volunteers, I thank you for volunteering, and we couldn't have, we couldn't have pulled it off without the volunteers. And I made friends, they all made friends with each other, it was a great way for residents to get to know each other and for us all to pool our talents together. Like Adam said, it was the best team that I'd ever worked with, Suzie Stack and Brittany Dorsey from the DDA embraced this idea that we brought to them as they were getting ready to do something themselves. It was, it was like the stars aligned, it was a perfect collaboration, and they were so cooperative and let us all, like I said, shine in our talents, and that was really great. I also wanted to, while I have the, the opportunity, to give a quick shout-out for upcoming events at City Hall and Municipal Park. October 21st is the Boys to Men Youth Mentoring, invites you to their second annual Lathir Village block party, it's 6:00 to 10:00 up here, it's a free event, there'll be music and vendors and gaming trucks and more. And then October 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM is the Trunk or Treat, ump here too, done by the DDA, and there's costume contest and decoration contest and things like that. And those are the fun things that Lathir Village does, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Here, none, we have a comment that was written in, and it is, "My name is Elaine Mantenin, and I've been a Lathir Village resident for over 10 years. I was very concerned to see a recent email with the subject line, 'Halloween Greetings From LathirVillage.org,' that presents itself to be from the city, but then turns out to be a campaign email. I was hoping that someone from the city could clarify if this is indeed an official city communication, and if not, I would love if the real city email and social media accounts could confirm this is spam." Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so now we're going to go to mayor and council comments, that particular email is not from the city, I'm not necessarily sure if you can call it spam, but it's not, it was not an official email from the city. It can't be called spam, though. And yes, I do appreciate you, Adam, for putting, both of you, not trying to be, for putting that on, and as I said before, it is a, the festival was excellent. I was tired, rather tired, I got home, some of the pictures can prove that I was probably a little tired, I like to dance, so, but thank you for putting that on, and I really look forward to doing it again next year. That's all I have, anybody else?
Yeah. Just a few things, I've invited the Southfield librarian to come to a meeting to tell residents what's available to them, because we pay a lot of money to the Southfield Library, and there are a lot of programs that they have, and so they're going to come and let residents know what kind of things they're, that are available to them for the money that we're paying. They were going to come in November, but again, that's not going to work, I guess, so I'm going to see if they can come in December. Also, it's great that the music festival went well, and that's the kind of thing that our Parks and Rec Department used to do, community events where everybody came in, so that's why I've been pushing for the return of our Parks and Rec Department, because that is what makes Lathir Village, Lathir Village. So, you know, that has been decimated, that budget has been decimated, and it, and, and the cost has been community events where people can connect and meet new neighbors and, and catch up with longtime friends and neighbors, and so I think it's really important that we do something to get that back into the budget. Last thing, I have attended seminars with Jerry Fisher, who is a municipal attorney, and there was a program, it was about seven different courses or workshops that were presented through Oakland County, and he talks about when public comment, that people do have to give their address unless it is a, unless someone is in danger. So we have stopped doing that, it happened when Mr. Williams came the night to tell me to keep his name out of my mouth, and as he was walking up, the mayor said, "Oh, you don't have to give your address," and so it's been the precedent since then, but he said that it's really important that people do give their address, and I think as a council person, it's important for us to know who are our residents. We've had a lot of meetings where people have come and don't really know who they are, where they live, and I think that. and I think that we do owe something more to our residents, and so I think it's important that that be re-implemented.
I was at that meeting also, I don't recall him saying that part, but that's what they do. Do you want to jump in, city attorney, about the addresses?
Yeah, I can, I'll let her finish first, but...
She said she'll finish.
Oh, okay. So yeah, under the Open Meetings Act, you can't require, you have to provide an opportunity for individuals attending a public meeting to address the public. You can't require that they identify themselves or provide an address or require that they live in the city in order to be able to comment, so that's why...
I'm not saying they can't comment, I'm just saying...
But they don't have to provide their address.
If they don't want to give us their name, they don't have to give us their name either. They could address the council as Mickey Mouse, and we would have to let them address the council, so we can't...
So I think that was, that was a seminar we all went to, so yeah, it was online when we went to that one.
Yes, it was online, he did specifically say that unless someone was in danger, so.
Well, I mean, I'm going to go ahead and believe what the actual law says. If you can, if you can bring it at our next meeting, and so we can enter into our meeting notes or, you know...
Share it with me, I'm curious what his...
No, 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 I'm saying the actual law of...
No, but I'll bring the Open Meetings Act excerpt, if you want.
See what his interpretation, and he was, you know, teaching a lot of people, he's pretty renowned in municipal law, so. I'll reach out to him too.
Okay.
All right, so yeah...
Did you have something?
Oh, yeah, no, I have something, I have something. So also want to thank the later, the people who put on the Lathir Village Music Festival, it was fantastic. And, you know, at one point, I counted about 250 people, and then a little bit later, I left for an hour and a half, I came back, there were still about 250 people, and then I stopped counting because I became a bartender, but... But it was great, I mean, you know, we not only did it, I believe it made money, I know the final numbers aren't in yet, but then there was also money raised for the park, and so it was just a great event all on, it had a really good vibe to it. The second thing I want to talk about goes on to what you said about me being, not being brief, so I will be as quickly, quick as possible as I can, but you can pass that down, and there's some extras for the people in the audience. So in the last week and a half, I've been absolutely barraged by conversations from residents about the state of the city's financial health, and in talking...
Is it just one?
Oh, no, no, that's my, that's my note.
Okay.
So I've had probably in the neighborhood of 20 to 25 conversations with people about the city's financial health, and from talking to people, where that's coming from is, you know, there was a recent forum where it was referenced that the city, erroneously referenced, where the city was running five straight years of deficits, and then, yeah, there's some, if people wanted in the audience, there's, I've made some extras. And then there was also, from what I understand, some somewhat irresponsible posts online claiming that the city is heading towards receivership, so which would get me worried if I was a resident as well. So I want to talk for a few minutes about the financial health of the city. The first thing I just want to mention is the information, I went online and saw some of the information, and that was coming from Munetrix, I can't say it now, Munetrix. And Munetrix is a dashboard tool to show, you know, financial information about the city, but the thing you have to understand about Munetrix is that it's based on incomplete data. So we have to produce the input file for Munetrix before, about one to two months before our books actually close, so it doesn't have complete information. So it's good for giving overall trends and so forth, but it's not the definitive source of information. And then we don't go, it doesn't get updated after the fact, once the books close, the county doesn't go back in and update it. So really, if you want to talk about financials, you really need to go to the audit report, because that's the gold standard for the information about our financials. And if you look at the table that I put together, and I did run this by Pam this morning to make sure that it was kosher, the top line here shows the ending fund balance from the official audit from the city. And the line below that shows the amount that we either added or subtracted from the general fund in that particular year. So for people who aren't familiar with municipal finance, the general fund is essentially our savings account, no different from you, you know, residents who have their own savings account, hopefully you put more in it in a given year and don't have to take money out of it, same with us. So it's, we refer to it as the general fund, or a lot of people call it the rainy day fund. Okay, so you can see in fiscal year 18, we put $70,000, we grew our savings account, our general fund, by $70,000. In fiscal year 19, it grew to $166,000. Fiscal year 20, essentially, we broke even. And then in fiscal year 21, we had to dip into the savings account for about $42,000. And then we took a big hit in fiscal year 22, coming out of, coming out of COVID, a part of it was in COVID. We took a hit of about $348,000 out of the rainy day fund or the general fund. And a lot of that, we had budgeted to take 226 out of the fund at the beginning of the fiscal year. We actually took out 348, and a lot of that was due to the fact that we had $170,000 less in taxes come in that year that we had, than we had budgeted. But the other thing I think is really important to recognize, you know, to see the pressures that were put under from a financial perspective, is down a couple lines lower, you'll see the inflation rate for that particular, for each particular year. So in fiscal year 22, when we created that budget, we had no idea, nobody had an idea that we would be undergoing 8.5% inflation. So when you apply that 8.5% inflation to the $4.5 million of expenditures that we had that year, that's $387,000 in unexpected costs, okay? So a lot of that works together to kind of explain that, that hit. And then in the last fiscal year, so the one that ended in June 30th, on June 30th of 2023, we don't have the final audited numbers for that yet, but I was able to get from the treasurer an estimate, estimate of where we're going to be, and it looks like we're going to take a $285,000 hit this year. And again, we had only planned on 172, so it's a little bit bigger than what we wanted. But the good news is, is the budget that we just passed on the 26th of June for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 24, shows a $224,000 surplus. So we're going to be growing the account by about $2.25 million. And that number may look a little bit different, for people who pay close attention, when we passed the budget, it was actually only a $4,700 surplus, but at the next meeting, we passed a budget amendment because one of the things, and we actually noticed this the night of the, of passing the budget, but there was a lot of contention in that meeting, we just wanted to get the budget passed and amend it later. So we found $220,000 of sidewalk expenses that were in the fiscal year 24 budget that were actually expenses that occurred in fiscal year 23, so those were put back into 23 and taken out of 24, which gave us an extra $220,000 of surplus. So we are righting the ship, so if all goes well, we will have another $2.25 million. The percentage that you see below that, so, you know, general accounting practices, you know, refer to, for municipalities, refer to a healthy general fund, if it's about 20% or more of the expenditures for that, for that given year. You can see, we actually did decrease as time went on, and this year, when we're taking the second hit, second year in a row hit, you know, it's going to fall below 20% to 18%, but it will go back up, you know, all things being equal, to about 23%. So we still are at a healthy fund balance. Let's see, what else was I going to say? Yeah, so, you know, we do have financial concerns, there's no question. We are under a lot of pressure as a built-out city, for people who understand the tax laws, Proposition A and Headley, those laws ensure that we have no revenue growth, our revenue stays flat in perpetuity. And you add on top of that, you add inflation, you add expenses and for things now that we have to pay for now that we never had to pay for five and 10 years ago, it puts a lot of pressure on the city. So we do have financial issues that have to be solved in the future, in the near future. Again, we put 200, you know, we're starting on the right foot by putting $224,000 into the general fund next year, but the talk of receivership is just unwarranted and false. The next council is going to have some work to do, so everybody knows we've got an election coming up. So that next council is going to have to continue to be diligent to, you know, keep this trend, keep the expenses down, so that we continue to add money to the, to the general fund. So I just wanted to, I know that was a little bit long, but I think it was important because there's a lot of confusion, there was a lot of confusion in the community, and I've been at council for six years, and I have never had an incident, a week, where I have had 20-plus conversations with people about the, you know, the health of the, the financial health of the city, I just, it was just shocking to me that all of a sudden that was coming up as a topic, so I just wanted to explain it.
Thank you. Is there anyone? You wouldn't be Bruce.
Yeah, exactly.
Anyone else have any, anything? Or, nope, oh, you're already gone. Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, adjourn.
Second.
Good night, everyone.